Session, call the roll please. Carlos.
Beret.
Here.
Martin. O'Brien.
Here.
Nick.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Yay.
We have a four.
Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? Other than the one I'm gonna bring up? And actually, I can tell it right now. Excuse me. Ray sent me a copy when he nearly got from Ray Buchegger about the fiscal year 24 appropriations reports and harbors and et cetera. And for the city of depot bay harbor in the budget is for 24 is goodness, I read it wrong. Only $5,000 and $48,000 in the fiscal year 25 present proposed budget. So neither one of those would do us any good.
Progressing.
Progressing of either the harbor or the I M C wall. But I think.
Could that be because of the grants we got for the for the restoration that does it look like?
Well, they granted it.
But that's apples and oranges.
Dredging for five years.
You need to give us some great experience.
Yeah, because we still had five years already.
Yes. Here, huh?
Like if I don't, it's 24.
Really?
Yeah.
Should be done this year.
Yeah. Okay.
I asked 19.
Well, Carla and I are going up to the, they're having a dredging meeting on April third in Salem, 24th? Anyway, we're going to that legal emergency conference, so we're gonna do a swing by and attend that dredging meeting. Where it's for all the cities getting ready to go through dredging with the army corps engineer. So. That's like, I want these. We need to talk about we're gonna put our spoils, all that fun stuff.
Oh, that, yeah, but that's this. My.
Now, from what I hear from these guys, tell me their new rules, like we can't do what we used to do.
Oh, okay, well, that was, right.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the kind of stuff I need to do.
Well, then, let's expand some for some, whatever, self worth it.
Well, there is an option that the council has discussed. We do that army corps report. I'll tell you about that.
All right, we can get onto that later. Okay, I, I have.
Anyway, my point was, we're gonna see Greg maybe. So if we don't have anything from him by then, we can confront him in person.
Okay. Confront who, of course?
Greg Steer.
Yeah.
Or a engineer.
Yeah, but, okay.
Whoever we can confront about what we need to do.
All right, but you also need to call Ray and say, hey, I need a push for this.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, having no correspondence, what do you approve the minutes of the February 28 meeting? And I read them, put them in February 28.
Oh.
February 28 stuff. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
All right, do them at home. I make a motion and accept minutes is good.
As written, any second the motion?
I'll second, yeah.
All right, move the second to accept the minutes as reading of the February 28, 2024 harbor commission meeting. Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is public input. Do you have anything there?
I'm just here to see what's going on.
Okay. Anybody online?
Yeah, everybody's online.
Okay. Having no public input, we'll move on to the liaison officers report. Oh, that's for, let's see, who did that? Oh, Liz, okay.
She's not here.
And she's not here. Okay. All right, we'll, we'll table that one. Just as a reminder, April is tabbed, and I think that everybody got a copy of the schedule with Carlos ahead, correct?
Perfect.
Good. Moving on to harbor master and city recorder report.
Why you going first, huh? All right. Let's see, the camera system is, we have nine new, new, we have nine cameras up and running now. The last one that we're still need to work on is gonna be the one that's gonna be pointed down at the boat ramp itself, that one's gonna be a solar unit, so the contractor working on this said he'd bring all the components down so we can build whatever structure we need to have down there. And then that way, he'll just need to come in here and plug it in and program it over to the, the office.
And I ordered your monitor, it'll be on Saturday. So just how many cameras now, nine?
We've got nine.
If I order a bigger monitor, should we can monitor nine cameras at one, nine screens at one time?
And our new system can actually handle up to 16 cameras, so.
Hopefully, your monitor can handle up to 16.
That would be like a 65 inch. I only got a 32.
Which is, will be enough. So.
This isn't big enough for a 65.
So the next thing is, because this system that we have can take up to 16 cameras, we do have room to grow with it. And someday, when the new docks are on there, if we want to somehow mount docks or cameras on docks themselves, we have the technology now to keep up with it, so.
Do we have, is there a power pole, I can't see it in my eyes, as you're approaching, coming down to the launch ramp, just to the right of the ramp itself, there's a space where for parking or just, which is there? But is there a power pole up at the northeast corner, south east corner of that?
There's one on the west side.
Yeah.
West side as you enter into the fish planet.
Okay, so I'm thinking, you know, maybe that's would be the place to put.
I'm not sure how we would be able to tie into that since it's a, a large power line, but you would see.
Power line, pole.
Yeah, oh, and that's a potential spot also. So if we wanted to have it there, if we wanted to have it down at the, the top of the boat ramp where like the coast guard has their rough bar warning light on there, so now we can put something up nearby that, so we're spreading everything around too much.
It has to be high enough so that the future rocket scientists around here don't go and destroy.
Sure. Well, knock on wood, the one for the coast guards that they could use has been there for quite a while, and it hasn't been taken out yet, so.
But that's just for rough bar, they can't, they wanted a camera by the boat ramp. In the past, sometimes a boat will decapsize, kick your boat, and they need to verify how many people were on board, so they'll go back and see our footage to see how many bodies may be still. Instead of spending a lot of time looking, then they know they have two, there's looking for a third, and we can verify that. It has happened twice now in the last 10 years.
Okay.
So that's on the dock to have, but otherwise, we've got, see, a new one that's down at the restroom here, so we'll be able to see when somebody kicks the doors out, and we've got two more down at the electrical shack on the harbor side, so we can see the fuel dock, four, three, and a bit of two, and then the other camera pointed to the north can see two and one in the all-in-one park lot also, so we've got more to look at now.
And the tops of the gangway, right, under?
We don't have anything up there, we just have the ones at the.
The, the cameras still covering.
Yes, you can see the top of the gangway, I guess.
Yeah, and the coast guard kinda has one for like up one and two kinda.
Uh, their own system and who knows if.
Well, it's just a coverage.
But, yeah. So, we're, we're finally getting eyes around this place. Finger docks, one and two are.
Before you leave camera.
Oh, sorry.
Before you leave camera. Does somebody other than Brady have a monitor for the cameras outside?
We're working on that.
Okay, do you want us?
We're gonna get those installed within there.
Deliver, okay, thank you, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Before you move on, because this is just something that hit me up, did you guys order some signs to let people know there'd be a watch?
Uh, we have.
Were you gonna put some up?
I've got the signs at the harbor office there next to the door. We have one down at the fish, or not fish plant, excuse me, at the restroom, that's been actually there for a while, but now we actually have a camera to go home with the sign we've had for a while.
What about the yas?
Camera question.
The.
We should put one of them.
Payment. Payment.
The payment thing, the vendor.
I can't remember if I got one down there, but.
We can shoot some, I might have some in the morning.
Just video, right?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a question about cameras, right?
So, have you seen any of the footage that these cameras do?
Yeah, I've got the recording down in the harbor office.
You can detect the facial recognition, you can see license plate?
It's not that kind of camera. This is, yes, there's a car going by, yes, there is a person going by.
So like a red light camera?
No.
Okay.
So this is a, gives a general idea of what time something happened.
But not who done it?
Unless they're right there looking at the camera, yeah.
So it's a backup, backup though, so you can get a days later.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it records like 30 days before it moves on to the next.
I want a camera for my driveway, but I haven't been able to find one that'll actually read a license plate when they pull in my driveway and bust my door down and all that, right?
But you'll know what time it happens, because.
You know what time it happened, I'll know it was somebody, yes, yes.
That's the kind of thing that we've got right now, so.
Gotcha. Okay, one more.
Okay, finger docks are going in, docks one and two are all done, we're getting ready to put dock four together. We got them staged atop the ramp, so hopefully this week, the plan was to start putting those in and getting that done pretty quick. They're, they'll make it through one more season.
All right.
Um, let's see, we had the port vert punch last Saturday. Everybody was standing for it at the end of the day, so I guess it was a success.
Yeah, probably warmer than the last, isn't it?
Um, the standing stair that we've got down on the fuel dock, it's been having some issues, we've been kinda kicking it a few times to make sure it keeps working. I've got Seagrant scheduled to come out. Shoot, now I'm second guessing if it's next week or the week after, relatively soon to do their annual inspection, I was gonna be talking to the Seagrant agent to discuss replacing the thing. We got money coming in from the marine board to cover this cost.
That's the pump, yeah, sewer pump.
Yeah, so that was, that's an exciting thing, that we can actually get something new, because that thing's been there longer than I have, and it's been working, and it still works, it's just not as, not as well as it used to.
They actually gave us extra money to do other things down there, we need to, not kind of it, but not eight to 10,000 depending on what report they look at, which is more than each of us.
When you started charging for the ramp, did they, how much did you lose from the state marine board and that?
They charged the $10, like they lost, we lost, I think about, it was like $4,000.
That's it, and it used to be a spring.
$4,940 is what the report said this time.
Wasn't much, was it?
No, it was uncovered quote paper down there, but. And been pointing up some budgets and everything, but that's on the agenda to talk about a little later.
I got one thing, everyone, we have the, the fence around the fuel, we're getting quotes on that, because it's falling over.
Oh, yeah, that's, I'm gonna put that on your sheet also, okay.
Okay, thank you. Give me anything?
I don't really have anything, do I have anything?
I got something.
She does, but, but I did wanna mention regarding one of this boils, so we, I do have a concern about that, I mean, 2025, the dredging's gonna come a lot faster, and the rules are that we can't, you know, do some of the things we've done before, the guys who own the property down near the Riverslands that owned by Maggie.
Behind.
I'm terrible, I don't know you guys where things are.
Harbor office.
So on Coast Drive and now to the park?
On the other side of the hotel.
Over the gate, yeah, on the other side of the hotel, there you go. That's SCA, SCA or something like that, SBD.
Yeah, the property east of the harbor, the shack.
Anyway, so apparently the city's been trying to get back the order, has interest, has had interest in getting that piece, those parcels before. And one of them that's right near, closer to dockside, is actually the harbor master plan is the parking that goes in and out, oops, ready that one aside and out.
Yeah, so it would come, yeah, it would come up to Bayview and, and it sort of.
Go to the coast guard and go out. Yeah, it's really, Carla pulled that out, it's very cool.
It's kind of a slay.
Yeah. Anyway, he is finally, he reached out to the city, he is interested, because his family's getting older, they're interested in talking to the city about potentially the city by his property, which would give us these lots down right there, so we could get another chunk for parking, which is already in the parks, harbor master plan, and then, you know, maybe there's a place further out. I know one of the councillors has an interest in saving a piece of it closer to it, because it's behind anchorways states. There's a, it's leaving about four acres to be for formal housing, an opportunity for formal housing, we're not saying we're putting in a formal housing, just an opportunity to be developed, and maybe we can use some of that property, which we could use, we could in the past, I believe, to have a place to put our, what?
The one, the property behind anchorways states is the one that's on the, south, north of the fire line on the seven.
Yeah, right, right.
Right, north of that and east of.
It's about eight, eight some, make points some acres, so.
And it has been used for spoils before.
But I think they were checking spoils, which is, I can see that's what we get.
It's.
Even, even if the city owns spoils, uh, land that could be used as a spoil tank, do the same, the same regulations and rules and everything applied, you know?
Well, that's what I need to find out. See, I don't actually know, I just know that it seems to be an issue when the army corps chairs change what we're doing. So what we're about to do, what cities are about to do.
They're, they're not gonna allow them to put the spoils from the harbor dredging to the ocean anymore.
Well, that, that's, really.
That's why we have to have an open.
Do we have that in writing? Yeah, why would you say, because I've not seen it in.
We're not having it written, but they came down and said, just to let you know.
Well, okay, but that, we didn't.
I'm trying to get clarification.
Just to let us know it was fine, but, but, you know, so put it right in when we go from there.
Just part of the reason why you're doing the April thing to.
Yeah, Spears.
Yeah, blood, glaring on here.
That's a big issue, yes, we have to get Roman on it, that's true.
Exactly, because the check dam was smaller than what's coming out of the harbor, right? You guys won't hear what happened.
I'm worried they're gonna use the check dam timing as the five years after that to do the main harbor, which we don't, we want the harbor, the five years.
That's 10 years for the check dam and five years.
Yeah, they're, they're planning on doing it next year, so it's not only check dams, because it's on the harbor's ground, five years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyway, so it, just since we're talking about that, that is just one of those neat, the things that I like the best about it is that piece where it provides the extra parking in the harbor.
Yep, huge.
Yeah, okay, I'm confused, you said there's something near dockside, I don't know what that.
Guys, you know.
The docks, you're saying dockside charters near the docks, there's a property that's closer to the dock area, yeah.
I can, I'll just fill that page out. You guys want the page private?
Because parking now would be one way through there, and then you go up there.
Then you go up, up and up, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, that, I got it.
That would be, I think, that seems like that would be a huge relief down there.
It also called for some improvements on that street too, in the master plan, yeah.
Is that where that devil white is, Brady, right?
Yeah, you go, lock down that trail.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
He, he's got dead ends, when you go by old Gracie's Landing in the front here, there's like a dead end, there's the undeveloped street. But that would go through eating those lots, and that would, which actually have to improve it, but yeah, that would be.
We know that property right now that's off, goes straight off the bay, and there's a, there's a trail that goes from.
There's a trail.
That's that property, so.
He owned that?
Yeah, he said.
He described it, yeah, it's privately owned, so despite the fact that there is a very nice trail there that I just actually walked on a couple of weeks ago, and I thought, wow, this is a nice little trail. It's not ours, but if we got this, it would be.
How many parking spots do you think we'd be picking up? Or have an area three?
Send you that, yeah, I remember off the top of my head, but if you look at the master plan, they actually, P and D, when they did the master plan, they redesigned the layout of the existing parking as well as this additional parking. And we have to send.
More content spaces.
The GSD was worth like two, five, a hundred.
Yeah, they did the master plan for the city.
Not reviewed.
There was a decent amount of spaces, I thought, definitely more than 10, 15.
Okay. All right, Carla, do you remember what, you wanna?
I do. So I, I just wanted to let everyone know that I have looked at the CPI in regards to mortgage rates, because we're coming fast across that. It did average out to be 4.1, but as you may recall, the resolution that was adopted was a minimum of 5%. So just a little FYI, the mortgage rates transient annual and daily will be going up 5% in July.
Okay. All right, anything else from you? Okay. All right, moving on to unfinished business, docks two through four replacement project. Everybody has been given a copy, 11 by 17, of the draft, oh, this is not, is it still draft?
Oh, yes.
Okay, the draft schedule of the that we presented, I, I, Advanced American Construction on, on what their plan is. And if you look down on the left side, under seven, it looks like, well, to me, very clearly states here that what they plan on doing is got two firsts, three second and four. Now, the thing, the ADA gangway for dock two won't go in until pretty much the last thing to do. So that could be problematic, is while we could load boats, we could put boats back on dock two, we could not load passengers. So that's something we need to look into as we move on here. We should not wait too long to talk to them about that.
Hold up, they pretty much gotta have the gangway, go real little to use it, but put a ladder up there.
Well, no, so it's not, that's the last thing that's gonna be done.
Well, this is, remember, this is just a draft schedule.
Eight draft schedules.
Right, and when they said at the meeting, when they start having the conversations with Roy about the staging and all that stuff, they could get us a more form, a more form, form schedule, so we would have a better idea of where to.
And it sounded like they were also still a bit flexible on which docks they take out and which order that they take them out and put them back in.
And that's fine, because that, this could be changed quite easily, yeah.
And they had mentioned that we were going to probably hear back from them, or I thought when, I was having a conversation with them sometime late April, early May or so, to start discussing our, our game plan on how we're gonna be shifting things around and at least getting something figured out.
Okay, I don't think we should wait much beyond May to get this set.
No, I, no, we're in the pre-con, I had indicated I'd like the final by May, because we're gonna be able to.
Sure, I said we wanted the final done by early May.
Okay.
So they should have their discussions with you soon or later, yeah.
It's pretty critical for that gangway.
We made that very clear.
I almost, I almost wonder if they do not four, three, then two, because the dock two is gonna take more time to do the ADA.
Right, because, yeah, it's almost backwards, because, yeah, they start with the removal of everything for dock two in November, but then that gangway's not putting in until January. Twenty twenty five, yeah.
Now, another thing too is can dock three and four support the delta fast boat tie up, given the flexibility, shall we say, of the pilings?
Well, they're already on two, so.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, they've been.
Yeah.
Crowded pile.
Yeah, two.
Just gotta remember, though, we're gonna do the best we can, and we're not gonna make it perfect for everybody, and it is the waning off season. So we just need people to make sure to be flexible, and we'll provide as much opportunity for input.
Yeah, we do.
You know, we're not gonna make everybody happy, there should be a way, and if I decide, we will make everybody happy.
And we're gonna have meetings.
You're, we're, we're gonna definitely have town halls, or maybe even have a, you know, a charter boat, mortgage folks discussion.
With boat captains, not just with the.
Yeah, all, all mortgage owners that would be affected, you know, so.
Now, one other thing that came out of this pre-construction meeting was the barge is 50 foot by 100 feet. So that's gonna be in the water.
I love that thing.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in the water from.
More up to that.
November through January. And, well, obviously, you can't, you can't run a 50 foot or 100 foot. You can't run either, that is, that size on any of the highways that ever were down there. I mean, 50 foot long is, you could do, but not 100 foot wide.
They're low.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, yeah.
Well, maybe we get through the dog way.
So, right, so I, I'm sure that the barge is gonna be in small pieces, but then that's the concern, they're concerned, I was, but our concern is once it's put together in the water, that takes up a heck of a lot of space, you gotta find someplace for that thing to tie up. Now, they do, they do have pilings that go up and down, like the barge, like the, the bridge barge, you know, they anchor it, and then it's work. And the barge, let's see, what do you say, four, it draws four feet. So, do we know how much the water is under the trooper's dock?
Depending tide. I was gonna say, yeah, it depends on the tide, because when we got a low tide, there's a lot of time, you can see the very bottom corners of that, of that foundation there.
Okay, and what about tying up at the fish plant?
Fish plant usually has some pretty good water over there. I haven't gone over there and put a stick in the water at low tide, but it at least doesn't go dry when we have some low tides, so.
Okay, another thing too is put a 50 foot barge tied up at the fish plant, leave enough room for people to get to the.
Fuel dock.
Fuel dock.
We'll have to go out there and measure it.
Yeah, so I think that, I think we need to measure, get some measurements, so we know how much space we need, and given that, where the heck are we gonna put the?
They came down, right?
They did, they did.
So they may readjust things when they come back to us, because they did go down there that day, they came in, the, the project guys, not the quote guys, the project guys, they know the ones actually doing it, so they could make some adjustments.
They knew, so, looking around to see if they could launch from that and get some.
Right.
Try it right there.
Yeah, yeah, so they went down and they did some, you know, the guys that will be on with the boots on the ground doing the work, the project manager, so next time we get a report from them, which we are hoping will be, if we get one by April 2nd, they may have adjusted some things, so.
Because I also was telling them that for launching, when we had the dredging done, they'd bring a, a barge down there, and they would crane it from the parking lot into the, just across the riprap in the creek there during a high tide, and then it was high enough in their, their barge, the dredgers, it was narrow enough to get between the end of the riprap from the boat ramp and the fuel dock, so I told them that that's been done, if you have something that can fit through there.
You told them that down that day, okay, so they could made aware that 100 feet might prob, be problematic.
Yeah, and let them know also that people launch, use cranes and launch things off of the seawall, right, there also, the fence does have a cutaway right there for the, you move the fence out of way, so, trying to let them know that, you know, in worst case scenario, right, we take the fence out.
On the, on the, on the, on the seawall?
Yes.
But then you're gonna, you know, that's 50 foot wide, and you're gonna lose the fairway between. But then you're gonna, you know, that's fifty foot wide and you're gonna lose the fairway between Dock two and three when you do that.
We're gonna have to make some sacrifices.
So then, that means that you can't tie boats up on the north side of one or the south side of the other.
Well, this was just for launching and letting know where, uh, where access points to the water was, basically.
Oh, I see, right from putting it in?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they wanted to bring a crane down to the harbor and launch it off the wall there in the water, that was an option too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, as for where we're gonna put it, we're just gonna have to see what they've got and see what we can do to accommodate also.
Yeah.
There's, there's plenty of room to spin a fifty footer by the fish plant there, so there should be space to, to get by to the, to get to the fuel dock, I would think.
Yeah.
Well, given it's fifty wide and a hundred feet long, that's.
Yeah.
Anyhow, it's just something that needs to get ironed out before it's too late.
Yes.
And also, Roy, how, how flat is the bottom right there by the fish plant?
I'd say over there, it's a pretty muddy, soft bottom.
Yeah, so the, the tide went too low, it could probably just sit in the mud until the, the tide came.
Yeah, it's just a barge structure.
I would, yes.
If they get stuck, they could use their four things to raise it.
True. I, yeah.
Four feet to raise it.
That's really, that's the only place it will fit, really.
Yeah.
But if we had the dredging done already, then we wouldn't have to worry about that, so we could play that card too.
Uh, actually, that's not a bad idea.
We are not going to get the dredging done before the project comes in.
No, 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 that's not a bad idea to say, hey, do that this summer quickly and get it done and then it wouldn't interfere with any of the other things.
That's why we gotta show great spheres that.
That is a big project that we do not have the manpower, the space or time for. To ask the board to do the dredging, so you're right with letter, later? Is that what you're saying? Am I understanding that correctly?
They want, so they're, they're process forbidding and.
Well, I know, I know, so what is we trying to do this on?
Dredging.
Get her done.
See? We're not gonna get the dredging done this summer, not gonna happen. The board will probably, you'll hear them laughing wherever they are. Even Carl and I, the only person, probably won't make that happen, they probably close it up more every time.
All right, moving on then.
Two silly girls.
To the dock leases.
It's my favorite.
These, these are the, uh, with, uh, yeah, dock leases, okay. I've done, uh, plenty of reading. And I, I have others.
If you need any more though, I have a whole box, just so you know.
And, uh, it turns out that I can't find anybody online and research, like other people calling around, can't find anybody who does this. Except for the anal retentive Department of State lands. They do. They do do that. I say that because I worked with them when we did the, uh,
Oh, highway owner?
No, no, no.
What's that called?
I'm, I'm, I belong to one of that fraternity of well-meaning elderly gentlemen with four members.
Walking around harbors, they?
No, 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 there are five of them out here in the ocean from Cascade, Hail, oh, both of them.
The Green Reserves, oh, the Green Reserves.
The Green Reserve, thank you very much.
Your welcome.
Anyhow.
I don't like them. Nearshore Argentine.
Oh, the nearshore.
The nearshore, I think, yeah.
I don't like them.
That one, that one I remember. Okay.
Call them the Nats.
Okay, anyhow. Now, I, I, I will say from, and we, we talked about this before, but it, it kind of remains unclear, it does remain unclear, why the city council has never reviewed, renewed the four dock leases. The current city council wants to renew these leases and has asked the harbor commission for its recommendation on rates and conditions. And, you know, I, I was thinking, as a minimum, the city should require each dock owner to identify the city for any instances or occurrences of trouble or problems with the docks. The city should also require an inspection of these docks to ensure their safety and operability. If problems are identified, timely corrections must be made and if significant safety or operability issues exist, corrections must be made prior to the docks being used. Renewing the leasing of these four docks will bring into the city's coffers a yearly total of seven thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, based on staff's recommendation, recommended lease rates. It's unknown if these monies will cover the city's cost to administer this program, I have no idea, I don't even know if staff has even looked at that because it's been, uh, twenty-four, less six, eighteen years since the last time they do it. Uh, the harbor commission, uh, I, I think we agreed at the last meeting that, that we agree with the commission agrees with the recommended recharges being brought up to the current levels, current time limit. Anyhow, that's kind of where we are. One concern was brought up, um, at our last meeting, I think, was whether or not, uh, Mrs. Fader could afford probably to bring a dock in front of her, her house up to operational capacity, capability, um, and whether or not she could afford the annual payment. Uh, the other three dock holders should be able to handle it, no problem, I think, because they have internal means to go there. I guess one concern I would have is that one faded dock. Now, I don't know the family, I don't know, but it, from the time I've been here, you know, that, that house looks like it's been here forever. And, uh, I, I think the only people I've seen use the docks is that, that particular dock and tie up situation is, uh, pregnant. When they moved the dock back.
Right. There's a small.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, other than the otters, river otters in the, in the Irish Seals, is anybody on the dock?
Right.
Go ahead.
Bob is curious, you say there's four leases, right? There's Kerry Wynn's and?
Carrie?
Carrie.
Yeah, the whale watch and, uh,
And Fader.
And, um, Monte, whatever.
Well, Carrie's, Carrie would be the Monte, Monte's, she bought the building for where the Well Sharp Museum is, that was the Monte lease.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So there's three.
Well, we got four.
Well, sea trowers with the city.
Sea trowers, so I.
City owned then, after that.
I didn't remove anything that, I just wanted what the old leases were.
Okay.
But yeah, obviously some of this doesn't exist anymore.
So I guess my point is, if we take that particular location out of their sea trower, now that leaves three and that'll be less than, you know, be about five grand a year.
Yeah, and if you take, uh, well, yeah, right, right, and, uh, you know, there, there's no way that this that we, that going on, restarting the leases is gonna get the city well into the black, or even into the.
Yeah, that's my, that's my point, I, I just don't, I don't know the motive behind it is, is, doesn't seem.
I, I think the motive is to get as much harbor revenue as possible, and that, that's just my opinion.
Now, the city isn't really interested in, um, giving free use of property, because the city owns, that's why the council is interested in it, because it is city property, so.
Okay, I understand that, but again.
It's not, they don't expect it to, or any kind of shortcuts, it's just, the leases were, should, they kept going, they weren't, and now they just wanna get these.
Okay, but I guess, again, the, the question is, is it worth the time and effort to do this? You know, but probably, I don't, I, I can't say probably, I would think that the administrative, administration of this program would use up at least a portion of this, now we're down about five grand, that the city is gonna get out of this. And I guess, I think, my, my, my question to the city is, is it really worth it?
Well, I think the fact that the, the leases are, it's a one-time yearly payment, it's not even like, oh, someone having to monitor like a monthly lease agreement, um, I would say, I, I would say pencils out just because of that.
Uh, it, it's not, uh, it's not.
It's not gonna be a major impact to the staffing side of it.
And it will not be a reason for the council to say we're not doing this. So I don't know if your recommendation, it feels like your recommendation might be, you know, unless you're bothered with this, but that won't be the right recommendation.
Well, whether it's a right recommendation or not.
I get it, but you guys, um, get upset when the council doesn't agree with you, so.
I would.
Just want you to understand that if your recommendation is not to charge anything.
Well, it, it wouldn't be charging nothing to these people because they would have to make sure that the docks are, are safe and operable.
I get it.
And, uh, and identify the city of any issues concerning the docks.
You guys can make whatever recommendation you want.
I understand that, yeah, yeah, but we're having a discussion.
I'm just telling you right now that, uh, that recommendation is probably not going to be what they want.
Well, that, that, be that as it may.
Okay.
There's no reason we can't bring this up and say if the city still wants to go forward to it, then we recommend that they, that they use the rates as, uh, as proposed by city staff.
Perfect.
I think it would be more advantageous than, for the city as far as deriving income from, to offer the property for sale instead of leasing it. At least give the, the property owner of, or current lease, whatever, an opportunity to say, well, screw you, I'll just buy it. Buy it, you know, and that's probably, doesn't know, and then it falls back in their lap to come up with a price.
Well, it's, the harbor, the city-owned harbor, as awful as it is, if people really wanna give up, and then it's, it's a matter of, okay, how many feet? Well, actually, it's probably in the, one of these studies that, heck, we have in front of us, as to how much, uh, land we're talking about. And then, okay, how do you price, um, it's like, you know, buying a swamp in Florida, how do you?
No, I get it.
How do you price land that's something?
Well, totally, and that's the thing, is, is that it's, there's no real property there, it's covered with water.
Yeah.
And it's an available waterway. So technically, the city doesn't own the water.
It's a tax law, so the city.
The city.
It's a tax law, yeah.
If, if you, it's actually, I did.
So the city pays a property tax?
Well, the city doesn't pay property tax, but if you go to the assessor maps, you will see that our harbor is, I wanna say there's, it identifies three, if not four, um, I don't, for happy squats, maybe not that, yeah. It's a, it's an interesting scenario, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, but the precedent is up and down the coast that anybody that leases anything, anybody owns the dock or owns the boat house or whatever, you know? So, you know, I mean, off the record, we're not just gonna roll over and start giving the city money without putting a little bit of a fight.
Well, I think, I think cer, yeah, and I, I think certainly the folks that have would be being offered these, these lease opportunities, I think that definitely is, you know, a proposal that would come from the person that's getting their leases being stated to enter negotiations at the council level, for sure.
Yeah, and there's a reason, there's a reason why they lost the lease in the first place in two thousand and six, because it really wasn't legal. You know, so the bed breath has been said to, and.
I don't think, I don't think.
No, it was a Renaissance, they wanted to put a walkway around.
Yeah, they wanted to put a walkway, a walkway around the harbor, and that's what they did, yeah.
And cancelled all the.
Now, while they studied that proposal for a walkway, however, they could have studied it without canceling leases, so it doesn't, you know, I mean, but that's the reason it was given.
Yeah.
That's the only reason it was given. Anyhow, um, I agree with Carla that if any leasing or purchase of lease of property in the harbor needs to be brought up by those people who are affected by it, and I don't think it's something that the harbor commission should get involved.
Sorry? I'm like, sorry?
Can't take it personal.
No, no, no.
No, no, and, and I, and I hope you guys will take when I push back personal because I just know that the council will, has interest, obviously, in doing something like this, or they wouldn't have asked any of us to pursue it. And then like, you know, same, and it would be up to the individual lease holders.
We've all had an opportunity, ample opportunity, to witness the city council. We know where, where their mindset is, especially certain individuals, and that's where this has all come. And to me, it's just a, it's just a, it's a, I don't even know what to say, it's a little game they're playing, there's one. I don't know. There's certain people think that the harbor costs the city four hundred thousand dollars a year and, and like Jack said, that, that invidy amount of money is not gonna save the city from disaster, which I don't believe it's in any, that would straighten.
But harbor has to be in the black.
Yeah, they'll have new numbers this, this year.
Anyway, that's just my, that's my opinion and.
Like an actual profit loss.
They'll have a statement that has all records that you can learn from state with the harbor.
Okay.
But I like Jack's, that's our recommendation, I mean.
Well.
Remind yourself he's Jack too, should I correct?
Oh.
I'm gonna put you on.
I have a ton of stuff over here.
Well, how did that happen? Told you.
All right, sorry, just, I, I'll verify that.
We've only got one mooner for that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. You've had several, you've had several names over the years, that's what I.
Anyhow, we need, uh, we said we'd make a decision.
Yep.
Uh, in our field.
But, but why, we have something we have to do.
Okay, um, let me ask of the members of the commission. Uh, okay, I can, I can get rid of that sentence. That's, that sentence says, we don't know, if the monies will cover the city's costs, you guys have explained, you ladies have explained to me that, uh, that's not gonna be an issue. Okay, um, I think, all right, let me make a proposal, what I, what I read was that, that, you know, the minimum, the city should require each dock owner to identify the city for instances or occurrences, and I think that should be done regardless of what the city decides. And again, make this statement, renewing the leasing of these four docks will bring the city's coffers a yearly total of, I could, I guess, would say would be less than seven thousand dollars. Uh, on, based on staff's recommended research.
Well, that's not staff's recommended lease rate, that's just going out the five percent. It's not really a recommendation from the staff, it is just putting out.
It was provided for purpose of discussion.
For you guys to make your discussion, but it's not, like, we're not saying.
Based on the information provided by staff. Okay. Then the statement may be, well, I'm going to be more listened by, then the harbor commission feels that if the city wishes to pursue this, uh, wishes to go ahead with the lease rate, that they, um, use the, uh, information provided by city staff to determine the rates uh, for these, uh, leases. Basically, what that says is that if the city wants to go forward, then we should do it only under these conditions. Try not to hear you, it's a silent step in the future.
Yep, that pretty much says it.
Jack, you got anything?
Got you. Nope, that's it's interesting, I walk my dogs a lot, and that, is it Jake Fager? I, I realize it's not the real name, someone came walking up there today and I was so happy to see him, I I, my dad bought a place in nineteen seventy, I've never seen anyone from Seaterover stuff that little ramp, and the guy seemed like a caretaker, didn't even really live there. He meandering, I thought he might have been the famous Jake Fager.
Actually, it's Janet and Kevin.
He, he told me, yeah, he gave me the whole story, it would show me out, but yeah, so it was like exciting, you know, I had a.
I'd be excited too.
Exciting.
Excited too, because it's like, they're just.
Name wasn't Jake.
Just there.
Right, yeah, you know, it's a, it's just a, it, it, to have someone come walking up the steps here about nine o'clock at night and, uh.
I love that house.
That facility originally was called Chark.
Really, that was before Seaterover's in, it was copy?
Well, Seaterover's where there is nothing but that concrete development, the house and that landing and the docks there, it's called Chark at that.
What was it called?
Calkins.
Calkins, like cranks.
Wow, cranks, oh, I see, I see.
They, they had a, they had a six-man cargo fleet, about six boats, and they rented dories.
Interesting.
Was that house there?
Off the dock.
Yeah, it was yellow, yellow and white dories.
Fager spotted it.
Yeah, it was about, it had to be about nineteen sixty-two was when they opened up.
Man.
Home of the lucky fleet. All of Craig's relatives. Oh, his dad ran a boat, anyway, lucky one, lucky dad.
That's cool.
Didn't it call seven, wow?
No, it did not, it came, it was, it ran off Craig, but the camper came in.
Not all of that.
Then it became a house, that's cool.
Yeah, they, they residentially did.
Yeah, Janet and then bought it back when. He's been dead for a good while, she's, uh, and that's really bad. That's that.
Yeah.
Anyway. So that's a little bit of history. I know that there was six fuel docks in the Eagle Bay.
Six.
Really?
Seaterovers, Calkins, um, where.
Well, Jim Coe?
Yeah, Jim Coe, and then here where it lived was, um, wall, spread wall place, and then where Carrie's place is, that, that was Mexico. They're all busy. Anyway. So if the city thinks, I like that, Jack, I mean, if the city thinks they need to do it, here's what we say is what they should do, and let them do it. That's our recommendation. I mean, I know that we always pick on them, saying, no, undermine us anyway, but they're the ones that want this and say, well,
Yes.
Here's, here's what we, you guys moved, put this together.
That's right, they asked you for a recommendation?
Yeah. Nothing would be better.
Okay.
It doesn't affect me at all. But, but.
Has like.
Doesn't affect me either, but, okay.
I think the other thing that was brought up at the last meeting was just the difference in length, so maybe when you say, um, inspecting the condition, you might also indicate remeasuring.
Yeah, because it's kind of like you also.
Trade winds was saying that they used to be five sections and now they're just three, so they would be a lesser rate, and that would be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
That's definitely something that should be considered, yeah.
Which further reduces the amount of money they're going to get.
Yeah.
Let us charge more per foot.
I don't just make a sign, if anything helps, God bless. And put them all.
Cardboard. Alright, so, alright, so we need to include in this recommendation that that the length of the docks be remeasured. Alright, now, um. Can we, uh? Alright, I would make the motion, I guess, I can, I can make a motion as the chair, can I, huh? I would make a motion that, uh, that we accept this recommendation to the city council with the revisions that we have made. And presented to the city council during one of their people meetings, even the third of the next one. Do I have a second on the motion?
Seconded.
Okay, so the movement's seconded. To accept the, uh, recommendation with the revisions as mentioned. Carl, roll please.
Burright?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beck?
I'm staying.
Zerman?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, that's alright. Now, I have another question. I don't have time to rewrite this down before the meeting is over. Can I rewrite it? And then send it to you, and then you send it out to the folks and say, okay, this, this want to make sure that this is what you need to.
Yeah, yeah, and send, send this problem.
Okay. So that okay with you guys? You do that, okay.
Well, Liz is going to want to know what you guys decided.
Yeah, well, like I said before, yeah. Alright. Thank you, I thank you. Alright, uh, moving on now, oh gosh, the budget, ah, okay. The budget committee meets in May, I believe. Okay, the budget committee meets in May.
Our first meeting is nineteen sixteen.
The budget committee makes a decision in May?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Okay, so, um, we have in front of us, uh, the budget committee recommendations provided by the harbor master and staff.
The yellow one with the yellow, that was what was presented last year, the yellow is what the, um, commission voted to approve as your middle particular order choices.
Right.
And then I wrote some notes there, and then, um, Roy can speak to some of that, so the list of that list and just put the twenty twenty four together with a few extra things on here.
Okay. And this, this, well, actually, it's in the last one too, jetty rock replacement. How long are we going to talk about this? Before it's actually done? Because we've been talking about it now for, I, I think a couple of years, the court has.
Since the check down, right? Has this been on here at all?
Yeah, it's just the guy that came down in a couple of years, Kenji, and said put the rocks back, they've been worried about the wall moving, the concrete wall, not so much the jetty rock um, being out of placement.
You mean the rocks below the fuel station, where the?
Yeah, that wall, they're worried about that wall moving, it's pretty much stopped moving now, it's been very, very, uh, since they put in the, um, reconstruction, the, uh, uh, steel reinforced piling is down in Bedrock behind Roy's office.
Yeah.
So they stopped the land from moving, that's what they're worried about. The other part is the jetty rocks, uh, during storms and natural erosion that moved out of place and they wanted to place back, we have, we as the city have to maintain. And Kenji's met us several times in the last ten years to say, we need that rock there, and that rock there, it's kind of spandy, and we haven't, we haven't got any boats or contractor or a big machine to do the work.
Yeah, because you need, uh, you need one of those long reach machines like they use to clean out the, uh, behind the check dam so that I can sit up on the, on the top and then reach down, lift the rocks and put them up. So, okay, so then the city has an, the city knows basically what Kenji wants to do.
And they're not mandating, yeah, could you try to get this done? Because it's going to be a wall, and that's around the, mainly the parking lot area and then the check dam on the bay side.
Yeah.
There's a few rocks, there's a big piece of driftwood too that's embedded in there that he said just, or, uh, he also said we could not have to grab the rock, and put, we could, we could purchase big jetty rock and put it in place over the other ones that are laying down into the creek area.
Did he?
Yeah, but to do that, we would have to have the same crane up, the same to do that, I believe.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be a lot, it wouldn't be as big of a machine, you have to have a piece of rock delivered in, like one rock and one bunch of.
Yeah.
And then grab it, put it in place, so probably just three of those.
Yeah.
Can he give us a report direction to do this, or is this all verbal? And do we need to go through a process to do this?
Um.
To do the, their work, or to do the work from that?
There was something in writing, like an email, but it's been a long time. When he does show up to do the seawall movement, he says, oh, I see you have it, there's the rocks back in place, yeah, so.
I wonder if that's.
Well, you could say, yeah, we did it.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, um, alright, so the sewer pump, uh, understanding whatever, they that's, that's in the sort of works anyhow.
Yes, alright.
Um, new fish cleaning tables for the current?
We've said that the one that we have is still adequate, it's not breaking down, we're thinking, oh, we could have it larger and have a have more room for it, but we've been making do just fine with what we got, so that's.
Have you had complaints from other people?
No. It was one of those building, that's one over there. What's that? That's one over by your office. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we decided that that one.
Pretty adequate.
Yeah, it's for the amount of people going through there, and what we got, it's still hold up.
Okay. Alright, reader board's been done, um.
Uh, yes, we have the reader board, and we're also talking about a new one that's on, let's see, trying to remember what direction I'd be facing. Kind of the east side of the fuel bunker where it has the phone numbers and things like that on it, it's getting tuckered out, we need to replace it eventually, so.
We need to, yeah, check it out.
We need the fuel pricing panels.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not the, the word ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, let's see, we're looking at new SCIF, uh, the one we got is still holding up, and I would like to see what the new docks are going to be like, and to see what kind of platform we might need for that before we go out and get one, because if these new docks are, as they say, not needing a lot of maintenance, I'm not going to need a lot of something else to be moving around in.
Well, they shouldn't need a lot of maintenance.
They shouldn't be, so. Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, I don't want to get a new boat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really feel that we need to get a new boat until we know what we've got to work on, kind of thing, so.
Well, looking at the, uh, the generator, um, I noticed that the, uh, yeah, thirty-five hundred dollars, and I can't remember why I remember, we discussed the new generator, but I can't remember why, why it was new.
Uh, well, we were wanting to have a generator on hand for emergency preparedness so we could fire up the, the.
Oh, so, so take the big one, okay, alright, yeah, got it.
And that's going to come out of this budget, because I'm going after a grant that will get the state, so this won't be in the harbor budget, this is going to come out of the emergency preparedness grant if we get it.
Okay.
Which we should get.
But if we don't they, they still going to need to pump fuel.
Yeah, they usually, we can consider that in part of the emergency preparedness, but they usually get a nice, uh, with a budget that this one didn't take.
And we do have a generator, but it's
He's one bigger one.
Just on its one, you know, if we have a power item enough, that's probably going to need to be used over here, and we're going to want this for over here, so.
Well, I don't, you know, the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, we just have a smaller one.
We actually have two now.
Oh.
We have two now.
Okay.
We're looking for one for you now, and then another one.
Yeah.
Bigger.
Okay.
I don't think we needed to discuss having a, the harbor, that's obviously would be a given.
Right.
Um, let's see, one there was also overweight asphalt, steel coat boat launch in the parking area and the street there, uh, got a letter or an email today from the marine board. Okay, it's somewhere, I think it was for. They are having a um, open up to applications between May first and July twelfth for, uh, funding, um, waterway access grants for for non-motorized and motorized boat and for access improvement, so just saw this today, so we're looking to see if we can use this and reseal up the top of the program, and also we're talking about paving that road that's going over to, uh, the warehouse where Malvino is.
Oh, yeah, but that's, that shouldn't be in our budget, that should be in the city's.
It's part of Shell, but there's.
I'm getting it, right, if I'm going after a grant, I'm going to get it all done.
Part of it's part of.
Okay, now, is it? And then this is the question I have, uh, on Shell, I heard you talked about, you know, overlaying. Would it not be better to, not dig up the whole thing, but at least dig it all out and resurface the whole, you know, maybe that portion of Shell out, instead of just, if you overlay it, doesn't that just make it, uh, liable to break apart again sooner or later?
Depends on the other leg.
I'm asking the question.
So they base in those whole, so we were thinking about doing just where the boat launch area is, that squared off area, it's like, uh, two hundred by one fifty.
Yeah, but, but I understand that, but when we went through the fish plan.
Right, oh.
We talked about that.
Right, there's a lot, I would base it in those areas that are really bad, because it's pretty thick in there, there's a lot of pieces missing in asphalt. They could base it in and then tap it, really hit it with tap oil, and then just overlay it, it's least expensive, if they tear it all out and do a full road restoration, I think it'd be pretty spindy, but we could get quotes on both, if we get a certain number of map promoted right away, then we have our options.
I'm, I'm just thinking for, you know, wear and tear.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright. Harbor lights along the seawall, that's been the, this one.
Yeah, that would be something to look at after the, the restoration project's done, um, also um, look into maybe a new fence in there, the one that we've got, we've got posts that are starting to fail, so they're in this solid, we've had to cut one section when we were, uh, when Army Corps was putting that
Right.
that platform in, and do their drilling, um, it's starting to show its age, so.
Well, I, and, and I agree with that, because, you know, we put the new dock. Well, I, and, and I agree with that, because, you know, we put the new dock two in. Their new entrance is gonna be adjacent to, but not, you know, it's gonna be near dock three. So if, if the fence needs to be redone, we ought to do it after.
Yes.
The, uh.
We have to fix the fuel bunker fence, we're getting.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's again, that's the other fence, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we wanna look at doing the different style of fence, um. Or, uh, adding some kind of light, I know that when we were talking about lights for the harbor office down there. There's the ordinance on what lights are allowed and all that kind of stuff that we went through the last time, so. That's just an idea thrown out there that someday. Before this is stamped as being done, that might be something to, to discuss if we want to put more lights, because I have had people. Say that they would like more lights down there just for a safety factor also.
Yeah, now, remember with the new docks, they're gonna be new, uh, power pedestals, and they're gonna have lights on.
Yes.
So.
But our old ones have lights on too and they're.
Really?
Oh, yeah, they're pretty dim, they don't put off a lot of, uh, they don't put off a lot.
Yeah, and it's gonna be down.
Directional.
Yeah. Down, shining down on the docks, docks themselves, yeah.
I need to look again at the pedestals, what they got to remember what kind of lights they were put.
Yeah, but anyhow, so I guess my question, would the, would the new docks and all the pedestals, the lights on. Be sufficient to.
No, I've had people ask for more lights just in the parking lot, because we've got like three or four streetlights and that's about it, there's quite a bit of shadow area. Down there too, and don't know if we wanna put some lights, because when we had, uh. Lights during Christmas time running along the seawall, a lot of people like having that. That light along the seawall, so, so, just, just a thought.
We have to be really careful about what kind of lights we propose down there.
Yeah.
Because we'll get feedback.
Well, and again, you know, this is light pollution thing, you know.
Exactly, because that council has an interest and the land commission in exploring that dark sky stuff.
Yeah, that's fine, however, you cannot deprive safety, not for my safety, just to provide the dark skies.
You think you couldn't?
Shouldn't. Better not.
I shouldn't.
Better not. As a safety guy.
I think lots of the fishing boats would have that at one time.
The lights are pointing down to the dock, and the pedestals now, all the lights are on the top and they're, they're shooting up in the sky.
Uh, the lights on the pedestals now are. Or as an inside, they only has a cap on top, so it's just a little bit kind of shining outward and wherever they touch the dock, kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, on pedestals now?
Yeah.
I never noticed where they're shining.
Their horn is walking the pedestals and lighting anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say.
That's how I would, yeah, that's my good description of it.
Okay, Roy, if those things are not already done or in progress, what are your priorities?
Uh. Priorities.
How would you prioritize your needs and wants?
Um, we will be getting the AED this year, so.
Yeah, that's right.
We're getting the AED this year, you have money for it.
And I plan on trying to rotate out your truck to, or.
Who wants to add a truck to it? I think you go to add more than thirty-six thousand, given how much your truck costs.
Well, mine was a.
I know.
Four mil, about two fifty.
I think we need to put forty thousand in there, because then you have to buy the truck bed and, yeah, so forty to forty-five thousand.
In the line.
I need Tony West online too.
There you go, see, it goes up.
The truck's not that old.
I do think that. One of your. One of your priorities should be the finger hinges and gas on dock one.
Yeah, those, and those are on my list, those, those will grab you done before we're done with the dock project, so as soon as we're, uh. Getting done with the season, taking those finger docks off, those, the modifications to dock one need to be put into place. So that way they'll be ready to, uh, start accommodating the, the turbos coming over to one.
Okay.
So that's.
What?
Oh, you didn't know?
He should have to do that either way.
Yeah, so the modifications of dock one, those are gonna be. Um, late summer, early fall, starting to get all those things, um, collected along with the. Oh, I have it on here, um.
New cleats.
Cleats, yes.
That should, that should be done at the same time, it'll be over and once over.
That's important, but the new decking, why do we need new decking of that?
Whenever I need to take the decking off, the, the stainless screws are holding it down, just snap right off now, I don't have a good way to put it back down. And so there are places farther down on the dock where the decking is just starting to peel up.
It's oxidized too and cracking.
Yeah, some of the stuff did it just from being down there.
So they didn't use stainless screws?
They used stainless screws, but going into the aluminum, it just.
Now, the, during the, uh, meeting we had with the, uh, contractor for the docks. Uh, they had a section of the, the new dock grading. And that looks good.
The FRP.
And so what we thought, yeah, it's, it's FRP, and, uh, they. Well, it was brought up during that meeting that maybe the city ought to explore a separate. Contract issue with P and D. To replace the, uh, dock one grid with the.
And power pedestals.
And pedestals also, so.
And cleats.
One suite, sir.
That will not be done in conjunction, conjunction, it's not totally a conjunction, but it will be done as part of the dock replacement.
That's a pretty major tweak, a grant for that.
Look into it, yeah.
I'll definitely look into it.
More grants.
Because it's the fish safe grading.
Yeah.
I'm going after all that.
And the pedestals on one, even though they are the newest ones, they're still getting weather checked over there, I mean, I've had a few where their plug is just starting to short out and. We've had issues with, uh, meters not working the way they show it's supposed to be, so.
That's a fact.
Yeah, so if we're gonna try to make these things work and function the way we want to, I think it's about time to start looking into that and just. Overhauling it, so. That's a thought on the list.
Well, maybe we'll just have another tsunami.
I don't know, wishful thinking, huh? So, yes, uh, working on dock one, being ready for the, the harbor restoration, that's high priority. Replacing the sand sailor and getting that replaced here sooner than later, so it's ready for the season, that's another one. Let's see, AED's gonna happen, um. And then I do have things on this, the segment sheet, that were on the list that are already done, so the LED lights in the fish cleaning station, that's been done, and replaced the door for the fish queen. We have the door, we just need time to put it in. Uh, stripes in the parking lots done, prepare the pipes on the fuel dock, that's done. Solid plug on the fuel dock, that's done, and then upgrading the camera system is almost done, so. We're moving forward. The, yes.
Okay, so basically. Well, we do want, wanna do that overlay, don't we not? And seal coating? And we should be able to get something from Seegran to do that, I think?
I should think so.
I'll, I'll try to get, um, right away to get some quote.
Yeah.
Maybe from, there's no other, there's no competition for that, so it's hard to get.
We'll find some.
Yeah, I think you could work.
There's gotta be competition, I don't believe.
They're from the valley.
Okay, but, but Seegran, Seegran wouldn't, uh, wouldn't help us with, uh, shell handling, but they will help with the other stuff, so. We should probably pursue that, we want to get that into the budget. Now, we need to get that done before we start doing all the heavy barge work and everything.
I almost wondered if we wanna wait and do it after, in case they damage it in the process with all that.
Yeah, so it'll be in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Okay, okay.
Well, it would depend on if we got the grant, if I forgot the grant, when the timeframe is set.
Because this one says, uh, projects must be completed by June thirtieth at twenty-five, so. But this is a Marine Board.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that should help with the other. Okay. Alright, so dock one. Primary, and then, uh, you know, the others, the stuff that hasn't been done here to be completed. Anything else?
Projects here and there where they pop up and they hear them.
Yep, um, okay. What do you guys think, uh, what is, commission, what do, do the commission members think of those recommendations, so. You know, the stuff that's in yellow, make sure that that doesn't drop off.
Right.
And, uh.
So to repair the crack in the seawall, that ties into the jetty, or not?
No, 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 this one, this is a horizontal crack, right?
Yeah.
It's a horizontal crack between.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three and four. And it's a pretty deep crack, and, uh, the, there's some question about whether the city's gonna do it, whether the.
Or.
Core, the core, like the city to do it, but then there's this question about, you know, if the city starts doing maintenance, then it becomes the city's responsibility.
They got a foot writing and stuff, so we just kind of just.
Yeah.
And it's the core's wall, right?
Yeah.
So then they'd have to maintain it.
Well, yeah, yeah. And I think they were looking for, you know, if the city did it for them.
Right.
Then. Yeah.
The city should touch it.
Huh?
Little childlike, the city should touch it.
Okay.
Not on our dime, and not taking any responsibility for it.
So what if the, if the city wanted to do. The work as a sub or the core engineers. And without, without any liability or responsibility, well, responsible way we can do the job, without any liability on part of the city or. Any, anyhow, somewhat that, that's what the drivers, the horizontal.
And I'm concerned about that one, because I don't know if that's a structural fracture that needs to be shored up inside, or if that's just filling a hole with. Sand and glue.
It's a special route with, uh, you know.
Yeah, they just, yeah, the way they ordered it was just go ahead and route that.
Yeah, but it, but there was a special route, he was gonna give you the name of it, it was something to use it, it was probably pretty expensive.
The other one is, there's an issue underneath the fuel bunker, and quite a few.
Yeah, well, that's a vertical problem, yeah, a vertical problem.
Yeah, no, I've got, uh, I've, I've got photos of it, they say everybody.
Okay.
Well, they, you guys saw it, you saw the photos of the crack, you.
It's a void in the seawall.
No, he sawed it, he saw it, it's been going down there, so we have, we haven't provided photos. Yeah, he's, yeah.
Yeah.
I have to get those.
Yeah, there's a void in the seawall, um, separation when the ocean had, at, the king tides had flushed out a bunch of, uh, concrete and material. At the ramp of the, uh, fuel dock there. Right in that inside corner or outside corner.
Just on the south side of it.
That came up at the last meeting.
There's a lot of stuff.
Well, it, it came up, we, uh, anyhow, yeah.
And I think you have to fix that also.
Okay. So. Okay, to go with, uh, Roy's recommendations, so.
Absolutely, he's harbor master.
Okay, alright, so, um, are we all agreed that, uh, we should move forward with, uh, these recommendations and completion of the items that have not yet been completed? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Four ayes there.
All agree.
All agree, yeah. Okay, uh, alright, so. We do have. Okay, moving on to new business, fish plant lease. Okay, on, uh, March twelfth, I, uh. Went on a walk through of fish plant with the mayor, Brady, Roy, Kim, Carl. Mr. Greg Malphino, who's the lessie of the fish plant. Um, and I noticed. From the last time that I was in there, which was many years ago. That Malphino has done a lot, some significant improvements to the building, second floor, painting on the floors and walls, and installation. Installation of commercial grade industrial strip curtain doors in the cooler rooms. And those were never there before, in the cooler, because I was, I don't know how I've been up there for years, but I don't know. And I read this inspection report that was done in June of two thousand thirteen, a three-day commercial property inspection. And some of the reports, recommendations have been completed, but given an out of tenure plus since that inspection and an inspection of. It was done in April two thousand fourteen, depot bay fish plant engineering report. Includes some of the same findings and recommendations of the two thirteen inspection report. Uh. One of the things that definitely should be done is there are two floor drains in the, in the building. That, for as long as I've known it, I imagine it's forever, are just holes in the concrete flooring. And that drains directly down underneath the, uh, the, the fish plant building, so. And one of the things that, because there's no piping there, it has also caused a dry rot on the. Underpinnings of the fish plant. Uh, it was recommended that that be, that those be fixed, and I, I would, I would suggest strongly that they. Those drains be piped in, in, into the building's existing drain system, or if it's not possible. Into a new drain system, and I think that's something that definitely should be done. And then, um. Carl and I had a conversation and she has a. I think a good idea about, and I concur with this, that, uh. Probably ought to have that thing inspected again, since it's been nine to ten years since the last.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, while with that though, he's done a lot of improvements, and he never came to the city to get permission to do it before he did them. We don't know whether he ever got any permits, or whether anything, so, um, that's part of what we. clarify with him, so we need to know whether or not these things were done according to code or.
If they were improvements or.
So we're.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it, it should be, painting walls is not. An issue, I, I, I don't, I don't see that as a.
Painting no issue, also, I'm talking about the walls, I'm talking about the electric and plumbing.
Oh, yeah, electric and plumbing, definitely, yeah, yeah.
We need, we need a full inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to make sure.
But the harbor commission also wants, the harbor commission, the city council wants a recommendation, there's. A comment from the harbor commission on whether or not. I guess whether they should, I don't, I'm not sure what they, they want from.
It's the same, it's the same thing as the dock leases, do we stay with the same rates? Do we increase the rate of that, what we charge for them to use that fish plant, it's just around twenty-five hundred.
Okay, then, then, the thing is, that, and one of the reports that I read.
It goes up two point five, it, it, the last agreement pushed it two point five each year, now that's not even for the CBI or anything like that, it just looks.
This people bay fish plant engineering report. Recommends that the rents, that whatever rents are charged, they should be sufficient to cover. The costs of, of maintenance that the city, for which the city is responsible, and anything else along those lines.
Well, see, the problem is, is that if you read the lease, the city isn't responsible for anything else.
I thought they were responsible for the outside of the building.
I thought so too, in charge of the lease, and now, there's one provision, I don't know what that, I have that, but it says. That the lease fee knows the city, the lease or won't or anything, and I, I don't agree with that, I think it's our property. But that's the thing, they said they would take it as is, and he's done a lot of work to it, and he hasn't had any expectations. That the city reimbursing for this, but I said, provide me a list of what you've done, and there's even a provision in the lease that they could get credit. He could have gotten credit for some of his work, so, um.
What does he sell, what does he do?
That's crazy, I've seen put white crap.
Really?
In ice.
In the ice, yeah.
I just never seen any activity.
He's doing fish now, guys, I mean, he does fish.
Is that the new sign on the corner for the fish?
Yeah, it's gone.
That's separate.
It's gone.
Yeah, and the fish came from.
That's a different one.
Okay.
But far as I know, he still sells fish, he packages and processes fish.
Yeah, but he does that, I think, in new. Yeah, but he does that, I think, in Newport.
How he trucks it down or whatever he does, but he.
It starts a lot of equipment.
He told me that day that we did the tour, they had just processed fish up in the, is that what you call it, the processing room, whatever it is.
The cool, the fish processing pool, I don't know.
Just never see anything going on with it.
The recommendation on this two thousand four, April two thousand fourteen report is that, uh, the building finance, the building's benefits, revenue, public use and environment should be in scale with the cost of improvement and maintenance. The property should pay for itself, rental income should be sufficient to cover operating costs and continuing improvements. So that, I think, is definitely what should be included in the lease. And, and I, I think that's definitely the position that the city should take on that. And back in fourteen, he says, the fish plant is a good investment, as a rental property, paying its own cost is a heuristic goal. So they're paying its own cost would be covering the cost of installing the drains there. They also did a straw poll back then, and more than half people interviewed, favorite continuing use of the property for seafood or marine use. Uh, there was talk about owning versus selling, and, uh, there's more. Because of grants that were issued uh, by USDA, was some of the impro- revision improvements in the building. Uh, if the city were to sell the plant, the fish plant, then the city may have to pay back about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to USDA because of the conditions of the, of that grant in the first place, so hanging onto the property and renting it is what is recommended. And for a good reason. Uh, and it, it, there's another thing that is bug me about this, about part of it, not to, so not the plant itself. Uh, the harbor regulation, section ninety-two point zero six eight states that the hoist will be operated, shall be operated only by city employees. That's been in the harbor regulation since I've been on harbor.
Yeah.
And it's known that when the hoist is operational, which it is not currently operational, persons other than city employees have operated the whole hoist, I've seen it. This is, this past year, I'm down, I was talking to Jeff, and I said, hey, somebody over there, and he, he was unaware of the fact that has to be operated by city employees, which is okay, that's not the issue. But either the harbor regulation needs to be changed to allow others to operate the place, or the regulation needs to be enforced, one of the. So. What does, what do the commission members think about, keep, keep, keeping, not keeping, continuing the lease of the fish plant to Mr. Malphino?
I think it's a positive thing, I think it should be, he wants it, he paying for it, he's fixing it up at his own expense.
It's not.
Not.
Modified, no.
It's not improved.
Yes, he, yeah, the building hasn't been.
Improvement is, there's no improvement.
Yeah, no, not, no.
Well, regardless, it's, it's still, he's taking care of the place.
Oh, yeah.
And it is income for the harbor.
Yeah, the upstairs has all the windows from what I understand, because it used to be floor ceiling windows, now they shut up the walls and put these newer windows with the.
Yeah, that's been done for a while now.
But he did it, right?
Those, those were there.
Didn't he do it?
No, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think. I don't think, yeah, because. Somebody did.
Because they look a lot newer than something that's been in there since.
They might have replaced.
I think he's done some.
Well, if he wants to renew the lease, do it.
Okay, so, uh.
I mean, if you don't have any other recommendation except to continue to review the lease, do you want to keep the same two point five per year or?
If.
CPI or what?
Only if that does what this report says, it should cover, it should pay for itself.
Well, we haven't spent any money on it.
Totally, yes.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, you know, like, 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 for example, a hoist. That's city property.
It's our kid, so.
Doesn't spend any money, but when you read that report, there were things that were recommended that our city didn't do, for maintaining the exterior of the structure.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's things that I do believe the city should do, if we're protecting our investment.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be the response, that's not to me, the maintenance thing, that was identified before we ever leased the facility, and the city just chose not to do some of those recommendations.
Yeah, but again, whatever rent is charged should be, should cover. That.
Some of those items.
Those items.
So.
So I, I don't know that, I don't know that two point five, I don't.
Well, what is the harbor commission recommending that needs to be done on that place? Because that report's how old? Do we need another report?
Ten years, ten, ten years ago, we recommend.
Right, so that's your first recommendation, is that we get another updated report?
That the report should be updated, in the meantime, however, that should not, in my opinion, should not, um, put off extending the lease.
He's on, he's on a three month, he's on essentially either a three month or month a month, we haven't shut him off, he was up in the middle of February, he's still up.
I understand that, but if the city, if the city still just wants to go month to month, you know, why not, why not go for a year?
Take your recommendation.
I don't think, okay. It's, no, it used to be, in the regulation, it used to be that, that the harbor commission, you know, decided on leases, and then the city council took the harbor commission out of it, which is fine with me, I don't have a problem with it. But, you know, either the city's gonna do this, or the harbor commission.
They took out you making the final decision, but they passed you for recommendations, that's all.
Yeah. All right.
I think the, what you said, you know, where you're talking about the, uh, you know, bringing in the engineer, having an engineer do cost estimates, basically. I think based on that would be, then your other line that you indicated, you know, that the other report said that the lease needs, the building needs to pay for itself, so that lease, so I think not giving them a figure, but more saying, we recommend an engineer report, and then based on that report, we feel that the rent amount needs to cover the cost of any improvements that the city's responsible for.
Okay, so I think until we get an updated report, we don't know.
Excellent, right there, yeah.
It's on the recording, but until we get an updated report, we have no idea what now needs to be done.
We're right.
Or brought up.
Ten years or brought up to code, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, so I, I think it's, I think it's really hard to, I mean, you can make the recommendation and say that this is going to take some time, so let's just contract for the work one more year, um, at the current, everything terms, at the current terms, and that'll give us time to get the review.
And, and the current terms would be two point five thing.
It's two point five, right?
Whatever, yeah.
And so that'll just give us time to get through the engineering and then, then everybody decide what they want to do.
I think it's pretty important to keep him happy.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there's virtually no commercial fishing here anymore, you know, so it might be tough to write another tenant.
Well, I will tell you that he's currently not happy, he's not happy because we told him he could not allow that young man to sell retail sell fish from down there, which is what he was doing.
So he was subleasing that too?
Well, that's up for debate at this particular point, I've heard two different stories, one from the young man and the other from Malphino. I'm still trying to sort through that, but that zoning does not allow retail sales of fish. So that was the first thing, without conditional use permit, which means he can come to planning commission and go through the process. But it's a process, and it's not cheap, but that's just the way the zoning code works.
And maybe other issues with selling fish out of that building, having to do with, uh, health department, COVIDI, and.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot, but I think.
It's all happened, they're just, can't sell fish.
Yeah, and you know, it was like whether is that fish processing and fish related, which is what the lease, that's a different, so there's a lot of considerations, but the bottom line is that none of this came to the city for discussion, it would be required, but all of this.
Right.
So when I told him that that young man had to stop, um, my name is mud right now.
I understand.
But it was just, we have to follow the code and, and, you know, we could work someone else out, have they come and spoken.
Exactly, and, and I don't have any problem with it. I agree.
So I don't want to lose some, I don't think there, it's in the city's interest to lose them. And I hope he realizes that we're just trying to get, we're not, if he was, if this young man was an employee, then that's different, it's fine. But the way I understood it, the young man was in business on his own, and the lease clearly said he can't do that.
Can't sublease, yeah.
Without council approval.
Without council approval, all he had to do was come and ask for it to be okay.
Well, and it has to go through the proper channels in order to sell.
Right, yes.
In order to catch fish.
And that is not something the city enforces, you know, all, all I can care about, all I have to watch for is the code and our city.
All right, then, I would, I'd, I'd make a recommendation, or a vote, I'd make a motion, with this, uh, harbor commission recommendation, city council would read, that based, in, in concurrence with the two thousand fourteen, uh, engineering report, the building needs to pay for itself. And, uh, items within the building should be, anything within the building that any work needs to be done to bring the, um, that may cause the.
Chair, can we talk about this for a minute before you go further, because I think your first recommendation would be to simply recommend that we get a, as, another report?
Well, yeah, I was, I was hearing that, because I, I'm just, I'm just speaking as I go.
And, and get the, and, and you want to extend the lease for another year at its current?
Current rate.
Current everything, pending the results from the inspection.
But this, but the building, the, the, uh, conclusion of the recommendation in the two thousand fourteen report, that the building must pay for itself, should be maintained.
But that might not be the current recommendation, realize that, right, when we get our new inspection report, could be something very different. So make sure everybody just realizes that, could be just something different, we don't know it's gonna be.
I, wait a minute, you're saying that then that the city, the city should not charge a rent?
No, I'm saying that the new inspection report, we don't know what it's gonna say at this point, just so to say. Are you saying that whatever, because you're mentioning the two thousand fourteen report.
Yeah, but the, but the two thousand thirteen was the building inspection report, and, and it was all, the engineering report also included many other.
How about instead of saying the date, just say pay for itself, without referencing a date, because we haven't, we kind of have, just say it pays for itself, period, without referencing the date.
Okay, so instead of saying based on, uh, okay.
That it just references, is.
You got that right.
She'll get a point.
Well, I don't, I don't see a problem with stating that, that other report, what it said, because I think that shows that consistency of, you know, wanting to make sure, but.
Except it says to stay in the two thousand fourteen report.
No, she, no.
No, 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 no.
Specific to that lot, that wording, uh, the building needs to pay for itself, that's the only thing.
I think that's all we can, you're, you're up to, up to you guys if you want to put a date in, but I don't think we need it. So, up to you.
Well, and I could just say based on past engineering report.
There you go.
Or past recommendations, past recommendations, there you go.
Past recommendations.
Or the current.
That.
There you go.
Okay, okay.
We don't even know, we gotta gotta watch the leasing anymore.
What do you, what do you do if a guy, you get someone in to inspect it, and they say it's not fit for a rocket?
I see, I'm worried about that too.
When the lease, it's not, I mean, that's, that's something that's gonna have to be brought up when, with the renewal term.
Yeah.
Because we do not know what has happened to that building in, in, for ten years.
Yeah, we haven't seen it.
Because we haven't done any inspection, and we have not.
We haven't seen any, uh.
Doesn't look any different to me.
Yeah.
No. Cause all.
But like, it's been underneath the, the same.
That's the shell, yeah, go underneath and see inside.
Okay, so.
Everyone's sure.
The recommendation, I think, should read that we, uh, we think that the city should continue the lease, either for a year or a month to month basis, whichever they decide to do, at the, uh.
Current lease terms?
Current lease term, another current lease term, thank you, and that, uh, based on, uh, engineering reports, past engineering reports, we recommend that the building needs to continue to pay for, must continue to, must pay for itself, the rent, whatever rates charged, building must pay for itself. And, uh, and at any, well, the, the, bringing stuff up to code is. Well, that's gonna be based on the new engineering.
Right.
So we don't have to mention that, right?
That's to be determined.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, two.
So given all that, what, what, what is the?
Sound good to me.
My second.
What, what did you say?
I know, is that the second, it sounds good.
Is your beat that please?
I'll sit down with Carl.
Do they have to go for it because it's a whole lot more money than dock leases?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's all for, I, all, all were in favor.
I'm speaking for Liz Martin too.
Okay.
One more vote.
Okay, uh, moving on quickly, please, to, uh, commissioners' concerns. Thanks, Brady.
Yeah, thanks, Brady.
All right. Um, Dan.
No, I just, uh, been, a lot of information thrown around here, but I, I, just a, a thought I've had, if, if we're talking about these dock leases, and you said that there's less dock space now, I think maybe we, we, who, the property owners and the lease holders or whatever, we're both lease holders, that we have another survey then.
Uh.
No.
Could be your recommendation?
Well, I'm I'm trying to think, uh, this survey, that survey was done in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, I'm just saying if it's gonna be less property for, say, Dad or, or anybody, Janet, because it used to be a lot bigger dock than, you know.
Yeah, but I heard the same, I don't know.
Used to be here.
Well, who's gonna go to the dock?
Uh, not me.
I'm not either, it is.
Anyway, that's just a plot.
Harbor master.
I got measuring tape and a boat.
Things you have to do.
With what?
Nothing, they go, they go what you.
Yeah, no, anyway, that's, that's it, I just want, I just want.
Whenever you hear that term voiced by anybody, I'm just out of the table.
You just know October's gonna be here sooner rather than later, right?
No.
Okay. All right, uh.
Look like our coast guard fleet disappeared, look like their map now.
They're back, yeah.
You know, look at.
I even talked to, the coast guard was down for a while.
Are they back?
Yeah, even the head guy and Chris David know what the hell's going on, or at least we want to say it, but something about, uh, the repower.
The repower.
All the four.
They're out in trouble.
Yeah, they.
So we took them to Uport, where they really need them, and said, screw you depot bay, it's out of the job.
Pretty much. I'm not the song right there.
So, yeah, exactly, so if you're asked for here, Uport comes to get you, and then we consider your questions.
But you're back, yeah.
You're back, yeah.
Yeah.
Repower, repower.
Well, then how come they didn't do this, polar plunge, then how come they didn't do the polar plunge?
Because.
That's a good question, I asked.
Because they didn't have enough staff.
Well, I asked one of the, one of the guys here from the coast guard, he came down to the dock, and I asked him the same thing, and he said, no one told our section about anything, like, well, I talked to these individuals personally, so.
I heard they plunged the morning of.
Okay, yeah, the comments, your concerns?
I just think with our expenditure, you know, hopefully we get a profit and loss.
I will get you something that will, you will.
But we keep the harbor restoration off of the, the, the P and L. But we keep the harbor restor- restoration off of the, the P and L.
Okay.
Just because, you know, it's, that's all grants that are, that are paying for that, and it doesn't make sense, because the original one that we had was the expenditures and revenues, but all the, all the rest- restoration stuff was on there, so it kind of muddled the waters.
I'll do it too, I'll do my own tour for that.
Well, because it, because it's pretty much past, you know, pa- uh, previous year that, that we're analyzing.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
In preparing for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Which I actually don't foresee it changing much at this point, um, I told him that he needs to start spending more money in there, otherwise he won't get any more.
Maybe I'll look at that new boat.
Well, actually, now that Brady brought up the truck, maybe we better wait now, he's, he's, I mean, the expenses are, and he's not overexpending by the years and supplies and stuff like that, so there's some flexibility in there, but, but pulling that out will probably give us a little bit of view.
Yeah, that's good, I like that, okay, I have a comment on commissioners' concerns, I would like to see that read commissioners' concerns slash comments, or, or just comments.
All right.
Right.
Okay?
Just, just curious, I mean, enforcement down with Harden, is that paying for itself? I mean, there's no real enforcement to it, like, or South Beach does it, I, just curious.
Well, there kind of is enforcement, um, our deputy last year, I got him trained to go get the report and go down.
Kind of is. How's that work? So is he doing enforcement then? Because I was a deputy.
He will, and he did his, he, he told, he does absolutely have authority, in fact, he told me that I wasn't here on Sunday, that Sunday, he gave him the report.
He'll have a, he'll have authority?
You know, that one Sunday, and there was like forty-two people, I think the report, there was twenty-four, but there was actually forty-two. He did catch some people coming back, and they always tell them, I didn't know, I didn't see this time, whatever. But he, he points, see, what's really cool is, he can do something we can't easily do, he could go sign there, sign there, sign there, where it's hard for a city, for folks like us, because we have to be nice.
I don't have any problem.
But he, he doesn't have to be as nice, you guys, I don't, I don't control you.
I don't have to be. You, thank God, thank God for little things.
So we have to be nice, but he does, and he'll be doing it for all, in fact, he took his training then.
So there'll be sites in the district court then?
I don't, he hasn't, we haven't really talked about sites, but I think if he finds a guy that's doing a lot, he does have the authority to site, but normally he gets them corrected.
Each time. Officer presence takes care of the, takes care of most, it sounds like.
Yeah, but the fact that he's down there, people see him down there, it, it does help, I mean, forty-two people, that, I think,
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not even sure we hit those numbers last year, forty-two sounds like an awful.
That was on, on Sunday.
Yeah, especially for March, yeah, but again, bring, bring, you know.
Yeah, on Sunday, yeah, so. Like, like, a lot of times, what he's, one guy stopped, actually had one, but it was on the other side. So for him, he said, I just need to get, look at, but a couple times, what they do is they'll pay for the first day, but not the second day, and so.
Or they'll, or they'll use their things.
Yeah, so he's, so he's watching, watching all of that, so.
Okay, I do have one other thing, we had our meetings beginning in April until all the way through September, uh, go back to six thirty, uh, in the evening, no, I have had a, a, a recommendation or a suggestion that we move the meetings from six thirty to six P M. Do I have, uh,
Ted is looking at you from here.
An issue with that?
I, I don't, I, I'm going to suggest it.
Yeah, we should be good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I agree, all right, so beginning with the April twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, which would be, I don't know what day, what day, what day it is, anyhow, it's the last, well, it's the same time, last Wednesday in the.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four, okay.
Oh, you and I will, oh, oh, we'll be gone, we'll be gone, you guys can run them up.
Well, we better get somebody in here who can, uh, or you could stay home and just let her go, or she could stay home and let you go.
No, both of us are going.
Anyhow.
I'm not gonna put Diane in charge, that should go over well.
Doesn't matter.
Um, we could also, if necessary, move the legal.
Well, I'm normally at Gina, but she doesn't, I don't know, she should be on May's doing that day, she'll be back on you, when will we change time? Oh, we did.
It's already been done.
Hey, Cam.
May, May is a long month, we can do it on the first, and then get right back in rotation until the twenty, like.
So do you have the bomb?
I mean, that's, I mean, it's the first, it's almost the last week, right, going way?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it'll be May one to the third, all right?
May first, I thought I said.
Oh, no, I'm hoping in March, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, May first.
I think we need to get out of here.
All right.
So change in the. Is that okay with you?
I really appreciate you guys being here, you know, you guys have such great insight and recommendations and concerns.
Roll up your pants, folks, it's too late to save the shoes.
No, really, no.
His hands, his face is a cross.
And Brady, Brady too, and on the fourth, right, and John.
Well, well, me?
Good job.
Okay, so, uh, are we on read that our, that the April meeting will be held on May, whatever.
First or whatever.
The first Wednesday and then.
First Wednesday in May at six o'clock.
First Wednesday in May, and there will be two meetings in May, the last one will be on the last night.
Right.
All right, it will, it will, it will be at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a shot for five.
You try that next time.
The March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four meeting of the harbor commission is adjourned at seventeen twenty, nine, eight.